Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome to everybody in the audience and those watching us on YouTube. Our next agenda item is a public hearing that has been tabled. At this time, I will pull it back off the table.
It was not tabled.
It was recessed, right?
Yes.
Recessed. But this time, we'll bring it back up on the table for discussion. This is PUD 2301 Garnet Valley and CUP 2310 preliminary plat. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing and we'll have staff give us a brief presentation. And then at that time, the applicant will be able to add, talk or rebut any information. I'm going to open this back up for public testimony tonight. I'm limiting everyone to three minutes. And I would really request that everybody stick to that three minutes or we're going to be here till late. So at this time, I'll turn it over to staff.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify?
Sure.
As discussed, we said that it was only open three minutes for new information.
For new information, thank you.
Okay.
Yep, for new information only. Okay, send it over.
Okay, so this is a continuation of a public hearing. It was not tabled, it's just a continuation. And you've received, you have received additional emails that have not been included as part of the record. Since at the last public hearing on September 5th, you stated you would not be receiving additional written testimony. That being said, examples of this additional written testimony to show that there is not new information are the following. There was an analysis of AMI that was also posted on the website and I put that up here, this is what we posted. An analysis of AMI from Brandon Roberts, and I believe that was received yesterday. Questions concerning reopening public testimony to address the disputed new information concerning the cost of construction of a three-story versus a two-story in Nampa. This is an item where I had shut down the applicant's presentation that it might be new public information. A public, and he never actually finished those thoughts. Public information request on agency responses. And then the Meadows Homeowners Association lawsuit, which was mentioned in the previous hearings. I do not believe it's new testimony since it was mentioned at the P&amp;Z level and the board level. And if the Meadows Homeowners Association prevails, the applicant has already stated that there will be two access points off West Roseberry Road and an amendment to the site plan. This would be taken care of in the development agreement, we would specify what would happen with that. In response to procedural errors on September 5th, you were given a copy of Valley County Code 9-5H-11, conduct of hearings as a refresher, along with snippets of a land use handbook prepared by Givens personally. The essence of both of these documents is to make sure there is proper opportunity for rebuttal by the public and the applicant. I would like to remind the board, the Valley County Code 9-5H-1108 requires the following. Recommendation or decision arrived at should state why the result was reached. A reasoned statement that explains the criteria and standards considered relevant. State the relevant facts relied upon and explain the rationale for the decision based on applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan, relevant ordinance and statutory provisions, pertinent constitutional principles and factual information contained in the record. Should be part of the motion to approve or deny or should be developed with staff assistance for action at a subsequent meeting. When you have no additional questions for the applicant and you are satisfied, the public has had ample input, you should close the public hearing and deliberate.
Yep, any questions for staff? So then, at this time, I'll ask the applicant to come up to the mic, state your name and the town you live in, just for the record. And if there's anything else you want to add or... You can use that one or you can use the podium.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, just maybe a point of procedure. As I understand it, the commission is going to take, commissioners are going to take additional public testimony today. So it seems that it would make more sense for us to reserve rebuttal until...
You won't get a rebuttal afterwards as well.
Okay.
But if there's anything that you want to state now?
You can't take anything new, so it's just clarified questions.
No, uh, commissioners...
There was a clarity on this, I'll had asked about the percentage, the AMI percentage. And you will get a chance to respond also. You can't give us new information at this moment in time, but you can respond.
I brought hard copies, but I did email it.
You're saying Mr. Roberts can respond to the information that they had used his name?
No, we just want an explanation of this, is this the correct AMI board? And then I had a couple more questions that you talked about last time.
We had agreed that he could respond. He had sent us an email earlier today and there was questions on whether...
Oh, you're Mr. Roberts, okay. I didn't know who you were, I'm sorry. Go ahead, guys.
So Commissioners Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise, thank you for the opportunity. I think, well, where we will start is with the AMI chart that's on the screen right now. And I'll let Dean take a stab at talking about this, but this is the data that you see on the screen is what we have provided.
So, again, I think, I'm pretty sure I mentioned this at the last hearing and probably at P&amp;Z as well.
Sir, I apologize, just for the record, can you identify something?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Dean Warhaft, 13580 Southwest 67th Avenue, Pinecrest, Florida.
Thank you, Dean.
So, and good afternoon, everybody. So, as I mentioned in the last hearing and at P&amp;Z, I am not the expert when it comes to this, so I turn to others to ask for the information. In this case, it's Atlantic Pacific Communities who helped us with crafting the responses to these questions. And as we understood it and still understand it today, AMI is AMI, it doesn't, it doesn't change. However, both the tables that were referenced in these responses are derivatives of what you get when you start doing calculations and you start working within the auspice of an agency and what they, and what their expectations are. And because we were talking about rental versus mortgage, the derivative number would be different. And some of what would make that difference also, especially when you're talking about rental versus mortgage, is if you're talking about something like interest rates. Obviously with mortgages and when interest rates are high, that's going to have a significant impact in one direction. And when interest rates are lower, it's going to have a significant impact in the opposite direction. So, that's really the basis of what it was that we were trying to respond to and try and answer the questions in light of the fact that we were talking about rental.
So you're pretty secure, okay with these numbers on that screen now?
Yeah, but, and again, just like, I know that I said it the last hearing and at P&amp;Z also, whatever the AMI is at the time that we get a CO, then the numbers will be what they are because they're not dictated by us, is ultimately it.
My understanding is AMI is the average median income of a community at a specific date and time. Is that you are correct?
Yes, and we're not setting that.
But that, I'm assuming changes every year depending on what that average salary is. Could go up, could go down. The other question I had, and you discussed it last time we had this hearing, there was something about 30% that you had to go to the feds to get permission for low-income housing? You remember that discussion? And I kind of got lost in that discussion. My question to you is, if you don't get that from the feds, that rating or that permission to get subsidized rent, what happens to those numbers? Are they going to be transferred over to the 80 and 60 or do they go on the full market?
Yeah, what we agreed to in the development agreement was that if we couldn't, if we couldn't win the bid to build the building that was LI-Tech, then that...
LI-Tech, thank you.
Yeah, that that building, I think I remember what you were talking about. That that building would still be under the workforce, so those units, they would just fall in under the workforce.
Under this form?
Yes, exactly. So they wouldn't become market rate units.
How long does it take before you get the LI-Tech rating, two or three years?
So, so what we talked about was that we anticipated based on, you know, it's looking backwards in history and try, it's like the stock market, right? Looking backwards in history, what we anticipate is that it's going to take one to four years to get it approved. However, in the development agreement, what we put in there, I believe, is that we would, we would attempt for 10 years, is that correct? And after the 10 years, then we would be entitled to build it, but it would have to be subject to the workforce housing regulations that we've set in place in perpetuity as well.
So in the meantime, you're not going to build this building until you get that permission, is that correct?
That, that would be correct. So it would be just a green space that would be stubbed out and ready.
Okay.
If I could, a point of clarity. So LI-Tech projects are tax credit projects. That's what happened with the Springs and in Donnelley. Those have to be applied for, it's not a rating. They actually have to go out and have an entire plan put together. They compete against other developers in the area also looking for these types of projects. And within those projects, normally you get more credit, a higher score on it if you put in 30, 60 and 80% units. So, the 30% units are ones that are a concern to me because normally 30% units have wraparound services, if you will. There's usually a reason that somebody is at a 30% income level. So those are a little bit of a concern to me. I'd much prefer to see the 60 and 80% AMI. Those hit our local workforce housing numbers better. But without the 30%, you're not going to get a LI-Tech. So that is something that, you know, that process is a little bit more difficult than others.
And you're saying, Dean, that you're not going to build that facility until you get that permission?
That's what, well, that's correct. However, from just one, one thing that, this is, again, I'm regurgitating the words of others. So, I'm going to do my best, but according to, according to Atlantic Pacific, the fact that we would be putting in all of the infrastructure and building out the roads and putting all of the capital behind this one particular building that needs to go in, that all of those, that's all towards the points as well and the point system. And so where you, it might count against you to not have the 30%, those, those other factors are over, could be overwhelming factors to get us over the hump to win. And you really don't know from year to year because the point system and how they grade the different projects changes from year to year, which is why we also talked about giving a leeway of multiple years to try and make this happen so that if one year we're really close and we're almost there and there may be just one or two other things that we need to do to try and make it work and get over that hump, that we can help figure that out.
And you're saying, and then you hope to get that done within 10 years? That's where the tenure comes from?
The ten, right.
If it doesn't happen, what happens to that chunk of concrete?
Then it gets built and it is...
And it goes under this?
Correct, and then it's, and it's perpetually workforce housing.
So just to kind of reiterate that, Mr. Chairman, to kind of bring this all into one place. So we have the 306 total units. Of those, 82 would be under the workforce category. The 80% units, what Dean was referring to is workforce units, those are non-subsidized. That's, this is a market solution for each of those. So there would be initially the 47 80% units. And then we would have the one fire unit that would be perpetually available, well, not perpetually for the next, I think we had 20 years available for the, for the fire district. And then the LI-Tech building is the final 34 units. And so if we get the LI-Tech, those would be at the 60% AMI. If we don't get LI-Tech, those would be at 80% AMI. And that's just a function of the subsidy.
So there's no 60% at all until we hear from LI-Tech?
Correct. And, and just to clarify on the, the fire unit, as I recall, I think it was 10 years and then it was renewable options by the fire, by the fire district. And if they chose not to renew, then that unit falls to the workforce units. So either way, it stays within that program. Is that right?
That's right, yeah.
So my question is, how do we get the 60%?
So, the, the 60% units would be the 34 units in the building that would be supported with the low-income housing tax credit. That's how you get to 60% is with that tax credit.
But they're only, they only make 30% of the AMI, get the 60% break on the rent?
No.
No.
No?
That would be 60%. I know, it's, it's a lot of alphabet soup with all of this, for sure.
It takes a long time working with this type of verbiage to actually understand it. There's 30%, so if somebody makes $100,000 a year, that 30%, they would, they would base it upon that amount of wage. They also have some that are 60% of that same wage. So it's 30% of your median income will be some units, so those are very low-income units.
Low-income, yeah.
And then the 60% are a little bit higher income units. 80% is actually, 80 to 120% is where our workforce is in Valley County. So the 80% is really critical to us, actually. It's more so than the others.
And so, in, in a lot of other municipalities where they have workforce housing incentives that are, that are already in place with zoning and the like, a lot of times, it's anywhere from 80% up to, it can be all the way up to 140% depending on really the, the density of the area you're, you're talking about. And so, in this particular instance, you know, obviously, you have the ability to, to set this up however you want. We, we felt like 80% was probably the number that made the most sense, so that's why we proposed it. But that's, that, you know, being within that 80 to 140% is that place. Or as Commissioner Malpin said, 180 to 120% is kind of where the wheelhouse of Valley County is.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant? Good. So at this time, Mr. Roberts, please come up to the mic and we'll address your concerns.
Thank you.
Is, just talking about the AMI then?
Yes, just about the AMI issue.
Well, no, I'm, I'm addressing all the things that he said that he brought up regarding what me and my family brought.
The AMI issue.
It's not just AMI. He also brought up HARA. I want to talk about the difference between HARA and AMI because HARA is the, the LI-Tech calculation.
Okay.
Now, LI-Tech, it's a $90 a year difference.
Come up to the mic. Yeah? Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Brandon Roberts and I live at 13144 Hawks Bay in Donnelley. So what I had, and since there was some clear misunderstandings about what source this information should come from, there actually is only one source, and that's HUD. So what I sent you guys an email form, and I also have here in physical form, is the actual documentation from HUD for both, oh, I forgot one. For both the, the AMI, what I originally presented isn't aligned with what that AMI is. I also was able to find out what fair market rent was in Valley County, that's what I brought with me. And fair market rent in Valley County, or fair market rent, not this other stuff, is half of what they're presenting. I have that information right here. In fact, it exists for all types of property. So HUD actually has all that information. It also has the multifamily tax subsidy, subsidy project income limit summary. The difference between AMI and the multifamily tax subsidy, subsidy or HARA is $90 a year. Not a big difference between what they're presenting and what AMI actually is. And as he said, AMI is AMI, it doesn't change. It doesn't matter what interest rates are. It doesn't matter what mortgages are doing. AMI is AMI, affordability is affordability. So yes, I want to deal with the things that they mentioned there, and I want to thank you for an opportunity. But I think that there has been a calculated decision to misrepresent the information as is. AMI is not even really that important at the end of the day. It's just a question of who can afford the properties, the apartments as they're presenting them. The reality is, is that none of these are affordable. When you really get down to what fair market rents are, what are workforces doing? The reality is our workforce is working part-time. They do these calculations off a full-time income. It can't qualify at three times the rent. Especially if, what I understood from the last meeting was, they did an area survey on the average income. If the average income is $16 an hour, no one can afford any of these apartments. So what will we, we be left with when they need to rent these apartments out at the prices that they have? So I did, I am dealing with that. The only reason AMI is coming up is because they said that they did the qualification for the workforce housing based on AMI. I have that information here. A four-person household in Valley County under regular AMI is $66,150. And a multifamily tax credit subsidy is only $90 higher a year. I'll nip this in the bud. They told you that there were no tables for market rents or for the HARA. I was able to go directly to HUD and get exactly the things that you were asking for, those tables. They use a third-party company instead of going directly to HUD to get HUD's information. There's only one source in this, and that's HUD. I'd like to say more, but the bottom line is, after a couple of years of not being able to receive the rents they want, these are going to become the fair market apartments or going to become rentals for non-personal use. They're going to be, otherwise they won't make the money that they're looking for. I'd like to hand this over to you, you guys got this in the email. All the information I was going to say today is here. But the last thing I want you to look at is the last link in that email talking about the Petaluma mobile home residents, of them being panicked by a huge increase.
Is this new information that hasn't been presented before?
I'm just, I'm just putting this in as a character reference.
You can't give us anything that has not been presented before.
That's fine, it's in my email anyway.
Because we don't want the written, any new written testimony, not to say that we're going to be submitting any of them.
Right, right.
Thank you.
So Brian, can I allow them to rebut, or should I just open up the public hearing?
Well, it doesn't matter, honestly. I have concrete data from HUD.
Get testimony from anybody else that wants to comment on the HUD or the AMI information or the procedural error.
Okay. And then at the end, you, they'll be given a chance to rebut. Then I need to open up the public hearing and do the, it's open, but now we start down the line of folks in the back, is there a list of people signed up that are proponents?
Well, it's, but you're only addressing specific information. Yeah, only the specific information.
On the AMI and that's it? So is there anyone in the audience who wants to discuss the AMI? Thanks, David, for doing that. No one in the audience who wants to discuss this information on AMI?
AMI only, everybody's going to address the AMI issue.
AMI only, come on up to the mic, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is April Roberts and I am at, I'm in Hawks Bay, Donnelley. So AMI, number one, why did AMI ever, why did AMI ever in, ever even come up? Because it was the July P&amp;Z meeting, Garnet Valley said, it was being used as a metric of affordability. And I challenged their statement, which I believe, being a household of two, being $78,000 a year. Today provided, or my husband's provided directly from HUD, evidence that a household of four in Valley County at 80% AMI is $66,150 and multifamily tax subsidies is $90 higher to qualify as $66,240. The different, Garnet Valley tried to distinguish as $90 a year in additional income for multifamily HARA subsidies qualification limit. The above referenced the question, references the question they respond to regarding LIHTC and HARA. I provided the multifamily tax subsidy project income limit summary to provide the answer directly from HUD and leaving, and no, and not leaving it to speculation. Answer number two from Dean Warhaft is this, wait, and this is me, is, wait, I'm so sorry, guys. Warhaft, and this, to me, is really a character issue or a level of incompetence. Yes, in fact, HUD does publish fair market rental value tables specifically for Valley County. And you'll notice that in direct conflict with the proposal, FMRs are 1,500 for studio. HUD's Valley County rental rate is $786 for an efficiency stu, efficiency studio apartment. Garnet Valley says they did an income or rental study stating average income is $16 an hour, 16 an hour at an annual full-time hours of 2,080 hours a year is $33,280 or $2773 in monthly income, which is below three times the rent. But it appears what they've forgotten to mention is the workforce employees are not working full-time hours. And the average hours being worked at a single job are 30. With their studio apartment at FMR being 1,500, none of these apartments are affordable. Keep in mind that HUD states that FMR for a studio in Valley County is $786 a month. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Okay, um, this has been a kind of a tough decision for me to make as far as accepting any more public input, but I feel like that we should give everybody a chance to express their concern one way or the other, whether it's new information or just all of it in total, okay? And I think as, as a good leader, that's part of being up here is to allow people to come and vent and talk and, and give us what they feel like. So I'm going to open this up to the proponents first. Is there anyone in the audience that is a proponent of this? Please let the record show there's none. Anybody that's neutral, just wants to come up and talk? Okay, now we're going to get to, please let the record show there's none. We're going to go to the opponents, and the first one up is Ralph Griniger.
I'm not real clear on what the new information is on this, if I get off track.
Ralph, I need your name and the town you live in, please.
Yeah, Ralph Griniger, as you said.
Thank you.
13162 Hawks Bay Road.
Thank you.
Donnelley. Anyway, I guess I listened to it. Personally, I'm not opposed to apartments. I'm not opposed to houses. Anticipated that when we built in that area. I've been here since 1997. The area's going to grow. I'm for responsible growth. My biggest concern and what I keep hearing, and I'm watching, right? I, it doesn't impact me, but I can see it go by my house morning and afternoon, is the volume of traffic. That's everybody's concern.
So you have to be speaking to the AMI for the hearing somewhere?
But I guess that's my biggest concern, right? So every time they come up and do a rebut last week, we added some traffic stuff in here that was never there.
Okay.
I'm not Robert.
So your concern is the traffic?
My concern is the traffic. And the new information that I feel like I heard last month that I have not heard for the last year when we talked about the Roseberry Park and Garnet Valley, and I've just listened, I've never spoke, was a piece about, well, and in the process of pandering to you guys, we don't get an extra time to speak. The new information is, well, you could use that money to go up Norwood and Outcheline, things like that, right? When I hear that, that doesn't solve the traffic problem. It just goes to show they really aren't in tune to what's going on in the area. They're not part of the community. We says, "We have a housing issue here." They're just not. Are you going to really take people up Norwood, Outcheline, and dump them out on a highway at 65 mile an hour? That's already congested and crowded. And then I guess my bigger concern, the traffic overall, is really the safety piece of it. I got family that travels that road. And then the cost, right? They're going to toss a little bit at you to satisfy you guys. But in the end, the taxpayers are going to pay for that. That's my only concern. My same concern with workforce housing, right? If we get the tax credits, if we get, right, it's all legal, it's all above board. But in the end, the government can't give you anything they don't take from us. That's my only concern. Thanks.
Thank you, Ralph. I'm not sure I got their first name right, somebody Lukens? Charlie? You're good?
Everything, everything has been said over and over.
Okay. Cindy? Can I read the last name here? Gickler? You're good? David Gallipoli.
David Gallipoli, McCall. I've testified numerous times about this. I will say that the flaw in those numbers, even if they're correct, which they're not, is we're forgetting the other numbers. When you build affordable housing and it's far away from the amenities, there's gas you need to put in your car, there's maintenance for your car. You know, you need to go grocery shopping. This is all part of being affordable. And this will only trap people into making a decision whether they pay their rent or fix their car or need to go to the grocery store. I mean, so there's a lot to affordability. And because these numbers are wrong and based on, you know, which I've testified before, and I don't know why you're ignoring this, the McCall Housing Strategy Report is pretty clear about what's affordable here. And we've spent money for those studies, so to ignore them, we shouldn't have studies anymore. Also, you know, the HUD statistics are, are, are clear. And the Idaho State Statistics on Affordable Housing are also clear. We've also had three zoning commissioners actually state that this is not affordable, so they thought it wasn't affordable. There's one other thing I think we have to keep in mind. And, and I would hope you would base your decision on the protection of the safety, health, and welfare of everybody in our community. The traffic alone here on roads you know that the infrastructure can't handle. And, and we even, we have no clue how this is going to impact Route Fifty-Five because there's no study on it yet. So I would hope you would deny this application based on looking at the interest of the overwhelming opposition from your community and how this is going to impact everybody in Valley County, not just the specific site. And I would hope you would protect the health, welfare, and safety of everybody in the community first and, and, and not favor a developer that cares little for our community. Thank you.
Okay, Patty Scroggins, Scruggins? Scroggins? We're in no hurry. Neither she, huh? Yeah, we should have brought the mic to you.
Now, if you see me walking out front, normal, then. Patty Scroggins, Donnelly, Idaho. I just wanted to, we've been here for several months expressing our concerns, and I just want to reiterate the, what you've heard all along, the traffic, the population increased so quickly. And when we look at our community out there, we have the houses, ninety-nine. I believe those are the numbers. Roughly about three hundred people living across the street, right? Now we're going to put the apartments, those could have six hundred people in half the space. And just all of those things that we're so concerned about, the roads, the infrastructure, if you have to call an ambulance, are they going to be able to come out? You know, I mean, it's just a, just a lot of concerns. So I hope that you take all that into consideration. I'm not against development. I know it's coming. We knew that when we bought our home. And we are right across the street from this, so it's a definite impact on our life. I mean, we sit here right now and look out our window and go, gee, two thousand cars a day up and down that street. The street that in the wintertime, when they have, we have the snowberms, there are times it's hard for two cars to pass each other on that street. You know, I mean, just a lot of things to consider. Why can't we start with a small community of fifty apartments? You know, and try to see, can we fill those? Are we going to end up with having a lot of vacancies, a vacant building over there? Because there are not enough people in Valley County that can go and pay those prices. And those are the prices we have to remember. The, what we don't see on this? What is the one hundred percent rent? How many of those units will actually get occupied? You know, we're afraid we're going to look out. Again, there's going to be infrastructure, the roads and all this stubbing, everything we've heard about. But no people living there because they can't afford it. You know, and people don't work. There are, there's a small population of forty-hour per week employees, but most of them are part-time and seasonal. You know, it's a, so anyways, I just hope that you take all that into consideration as you vote today and think about the future of Valley County and how beautiful it is and what we could potentially do to ruin it. So thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Dennis Scroggins? You're a little faster.
So far. My name is Dennis Scroggins. I live at thirty-six Timberline, Donnelly, Idaho. My, this, there are people here in opposition because this is not the right place for this. We might need it in this county, and I'm sure we do at some point. But this is not the right area to put it. It requires a variance that right there should deny it. And if you, if they can't make money without you granting them a variance, they're in the wrong spot. They can't mitigate the infrastructure. They can't mitigate the density. And another question I had is where are all the people, your citizens, clamoring to have this built so they can go live there? There's not a soul in this room. Anyway, I don't have much more to say. I've said repeatedly everything I've already said. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Deidra Hushman. What was that?
Deidra Hushman, Fifteen Buckskin Drive and a lot at one-three-one-four-one Hawks Bay Drive. I never speak, but I am just going to say that basically we have enjoyed Valley County, discovered it from San Diego, have come up and have now been able to semi-retire. So we have a vested interest in this community. We bought a lot for retirement. We're already seeing Hawks Bay become Airbnb central. So that's frustrating enough. And you add this other component to what is ruining our retirement life, and I, I know this is people's actual first home, so third-world problem here. But nonetheless, I very much hope for everyone's sake that you do take into the safety as we walk by the pathway and see several speeding people, the children. I work as a substitute teacher. It'd break my heart to have any of those buses or parents commuting to be in an accident. So thank you for listening. Thank you for everyone else who has spoken before and all the research everybody has done. Please save our community.
Thank you, Deidra. Jackie Beveridge?
My name is Jackie Beveridge, thirty-two Lakewood Road, Donnelly, Idaho. And our family's been up in this area for the last sixty years. And my husband and I retired two years ago here. For a lot of reasons. Once, we thought there was a lot of sense and sensibility in Valley County. And I'm questioning that now. But we've followed this project from way back when it was two hundred mobile homes. And we've all fought it because of the, what everybody else has spoken about, the transportation issues for one, the infrastructure. And I was reminded of a letter here, August seventh, that came to you from Idaho Transportation Department, that they need to do a study on the outcome at Roseberry and Highway Fifty-Five. Until that's done, this should not be approved at all. There is absolutely no reason. And I know when it comes down to voting and making sense of things we want here, I think we all want the same thing. We want this valley to remain a nice, peaceful place to live. We don't need cars racing in and out of places. We don't need a stoplight in Donnelly. In Donnelly, Idaho, a stoplight? No. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. April? You want to testify to anything else besides the AMI? Yes?
So one of the recent things that we've been speaking about is we have light ordinance. And with an apartment complex, how do we maintain that? We, we can't. There's a liability to the builders, if they don't have proper lighting, to keep their tenants safe. But to have the proper lighting so nobody gets sued for falling and et cetera, you're going to have to, it's, you're not going to be able to see the, the sky. We have these ordinance in place for a reason. I respect them. And I just wish others could respect them. In addition to that, we know that, you know, we're talking about the dangerous roads, the S Bridge and everything in between. And I've spoken with a couple of people from Donnelly Fire Department. I've spoken with the ambulance. They don't believe that the S Bridge is safe. They dread when they get those calls that there's been another accident there. You have fire department, they're losing people. They're losing people because they're taking jobs in Boise because they pay more. So we are, we have a problem with, you know, emergency assistance, police not coming quick enough. They're doing their best. They really are. But for what is going on, it's like we're putting the cart before the horse. And I know for myself and even my husband, you know, we do, we are all in agreeance on one, on agreement on one thing. We do need more housing. But it's got to be done the right way. And this is definitely not the right way. But we do need housing. We, we do, we do want some growth. But again, you just can't put a cart before the horse. It doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Brendan Roberts?
Thank you. I didn't think I'd get this opportunity. So am I going to bring up anything from the, from the previous portion? But I think there needs to be a lot of thought actually applied. I mean, I, this is what I do for a living. I'm a loan officer, but I specialize in affordable housing. So I have a lot of experience, particularly in Idaho and California, understanding how that works. It doesn't matter whether it's rent or whether it's house. AMI is AMI. And the thing that I just want to address is the viability of being able to sustain in their their, their, their fair market rental rents that are double what HUD says for the area, which I have proof on. The other part I want to say is, you know, once they have an approval, who's going to police them in keeping their word in all the elements and things that you guys have asked them to add to? Yes, it will be in writing, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that's how it pencils out the reality. We all know that when you're building development, sometimes you cut corners in order to make things right. That's a reality. And that's something I want to have to think about and consider. Will these become rentals for vacation use? I just don't think that the rental income that they're asking for, HUD doesn't agree with it, is sustainable. A five-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot studio for fifteen hundred dollars? Might as well go live in Beverly Hills or California. That's not sustainable for somebody making sixteen dollars an hour of one person, of one-person apartment. So just ask you to do some real thinking, look at the stuff that I provided you so that you can really do an analysis on whether or not part-time employees, even full-time employees, making sixteen dollars or even, it costs twenty-seven dollars an hour in order for you to afford some of the places that they have, and that's not realistic for our workforce housing. It's not realistic for a lot of people who work in part-time and double jobs here. Really hope that you deny this. But based on the facts that they will not be affordable for people who are actual residents here and what those consequences actually will mean later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Next one on the list is Cynthia Bean.
For this opportunity, commissioners. My, my name is Cynthia Bean. I'm at one-three-zero-four-two Hill House Loop Road. My husband and I bought a place here a few years ago for the recreational opportunities here and how lovely it is out here. And we would really hate to see this development in such a rural area. We both are skiers and Temerack and Brundage are some of the reasons we moved here. We realized that resort towns need housing. We desperately do need housing, and in McCall too. All resort towns around the country seem to be suffering from this affordable housing issue for their workers. And we understand that, and we realize that growth will happen. Auburn does need to be wise, planned growth, smart growth. My thing is, like, Donnelly doesn't even have a grocery store, for God's sakes. You know, we don't, we've got to go to McCall or come down here to Cascade to go to the grocery store. So why are we saying there's going to be workforce housing in this little rural area community? We don't even have the services to support it. The S Bridge is a huge concern of mine because I travel across that to get home. And it's rated by the Idaho Truck Transportation Department in the red for needing repairs or replacement. And you're going to put that many cars going back and forth over an S Bridge that's dangerous, especially in the wintertime. And we just don't, I just simply don't think we have the infrastructure for it. I do believe that this kind of development needs to be more in the center of a town like along Highway Fifty-Five. Right now, I simply don't think Donnelly is the place for it, even if it was along the highway, by the mere fact that we don't have a store. We don't seem to have all the services. Everybody else has testified that's been here longer than me about fire and police force service here. That it's not sufficient to handle this. So I would ask that you commissioners consider the big opposition to this development and that most of us here are being, trying to be reasonable people. We're not saying that we don't need affordable housing, but this is not the development that will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Joey, you're up.
Thank you for this opportunity, Commissioner Hasbrook and other commissioners. I'd just like to say at twenty-seven dollars an hour or forty-hour work week is about fifty-two thousand dollars a year. I don't know that a county commissioner could afford to live here. Honestly, I mean, do the numbers. You're, you know what you get paid. I don't. In any case, in request of the county commissioners, I'd like to ask the commissioners of their respective districts to represent the constituents of the district rather than the developers in someone else's district. Please do that. I don't have much else to say. I love seeing men and women astride horseback, still moving cattle around these fields. I'd like to see that far into the future, and I hope my grandchildren can see that. So that's about all I had to say. And that has nothing to do with the AMI or anything, but I just wanted to throw in something because I have the opportunity and I thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, Joey. Chris Renfro?
Thank you for the chance to speak again. I almost didn't come because I didn't think I'd be able to. And I was just going to watch it, so I'm glad I'm here. I wanted to address two specific things that I really wish that I could have rebutted their rebuttal at the last hearing. And I'll take you back to when I first met Dean and the other people from Three Pillars. As representing the Meadows at West Mountain HOA, I was contacted to find out if I would be willing to try and help people get to a meeting so they could present themselves and garner the support of the community for the project they were embarking on. At the, at that very first meeting, after the meeting, I got a chance to speak personally with Dean and a couple of the other gentlemen there. And my comment was to them was, you may or may not be good developers. Only time will tell. And as we continue down this road, I think some things have been uncovered And as we continue down this road, I think some things have been uncovered that leads me to believe that there are some issues here. And at the last meeting, two specific questions were asked of them during their rebuttal. The first one was regarding our, it may have been the first or second one, was regarding the well, because they have presented themselves to you as developers that will come in and improve our well for us and our infrastructure, when the reality is, the well is not owned by the homeowners or the HOA, as I think has been somewhat misleadingly presented to you. But our well is in disrepair, and we struggle constantly with DEQ, with IPUC, to get some level of enforcement, to get the developers to do the necessary repairs and upgrades to our well to keep the water quality safe for us. So, when it was asked of them, if they don't do those repairs, who would the burden fall on? And Joe Pockner slid the mic over to himself, and he said, unfortunately, it will fall on the homeowners. And that was an outright misrepresentation of the truth. The other one is, a couple different hearings ago, when we talked about the issue of them using our private roads, which you found out during the last hearing, that we filed a lawsuit as an HOA to get, force them to turn over the roads to the HOA, which our attorney has assured us belonged to us. They stated that if they could not use our private roads to access their development, no problem, they were prepared to come back to you with access and entrance and exit off of Roseberry. I asked a couple meetings ago of Dean specifically, why don't they just do that, instead of us having to deal with this road issue? And he stated, we can't have access on and off of Roseberry, there's not enough fringe to get it safely approved. So, leaves a big question in my mind.
Thank you Chris.
Before Chris, before we leave, Boons, Watersome, is it Northlake Water and Sewer?
No. I am on the board of Northlake Sewer and Water, and we don't want that system unless it has $1 to $2 million worth of upgrades. It's not even in our master plan to make that part of the loop of our service area. It is owned by the sellers of this property that are trying to partner with these developers. And they have refused to put a dime into it, and it is owned by Timberline Development LLC.
Okay, that's the last one on my list, is there anyone else? You first after me?
Trice Gibbene, Donnelly. I want to reiterate from Chris, speaking about our water. Our water, our electric went off three times last winter. And I personally emailed Mark Reichman of Timberline LLC. I contacted DEQ every single time. We went for days where we were not allowed to use our water, because Mr. Reichman refuses to do a backup generator. When I asked him personally why he will not do that, he can't find anyone to put in a concrete pad for the generator. All right? So, this is Mr. Reichman. And it's not a fun thing to have your power out and you can't use your water, for no reason. I forgot to ask at the last hearing, the homes are going to be for sale, we found that out. They are stick-built on-site, we heard. I want to know if they're on leased land, because usually Three Pillars and Dean Warhoff and their developers here always have them on leased land. So, I'd like to know what the rent is on that leased land. If you take the $1 million that everyone seemed really excited about on the last hearing, from Norwood, approximately a million dollars, and you put it towards the bridge, then you have two problems and no solutions. You're going to divert traffic down Norwood with not being halfway paved is ridiculous. And now you're going to take no paving, divert traffic down there, like the gentleman said, put it out on a 65 mile an hour road. Dangerous, dangerous, dangerous. A million dollars is pennies towards the bridge. So, that's a huge concern, that everyone was so excited about that at the last hearing. Basically, this is a square peg you're trying to push into a round hole. This urban density does not belong out there. Both you, Commissioner Thompson, and Chair Commissioner, along with Gary Swain, all agreed this density did not belong out in Donnelly during the hearing of increasing PUD densities. What changed? You were vehemently opposed to it with Gary Swain. I just want to remind you of that. So, please, listen to the overwhelming facts. These are facts, not just feelings that we have been accused of. We have sat up here, emailed, researched, studied, came on our own personal time to protect our valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you Trice. Okay, you're next.
My name is Mike McCoy, I live at 403 Rio Vista. I'm a long-term resident of Valley County, and my family's been in Valley County for 150 years. I have some questions as somebody who has ran cattle, irrigated and built out in that area. When I see this thing for a variance, Valley County, long-term in my memory, so this is just my memory, I'm not relying on something somebody told me, that I may or may not be right about. We have granted variances and variances and variances to encourage people to come in here and build. And we're still trying to catch up from variances we granted in the 1980s. When I look at the infrastructure, that soil is sandy. And I'll guarantee you, there's been no study, and nobody ever studied with the pumpkin patch how much that soil has sunk. And it has sunk, it's visibly obvious. Now, when we're talking about the infrastructure, suppose they have to build the roads in and out. That ground is sandy. It's loose dirt. They're going to be hauling, they have lowballed the infrastructure for any kind of roads. Their price per foot is a fraction of what it's going to cost them. Okay. Now, we're also, I hear Norwood Road, you know, as somebody who drove bus for Harlow's buses, you know, we won't run down, we would not run down Norwood sometimes in the winter and in the spring, because it's soil is too sandy to get a bus down, and it blows shut. And sometimes the county won't even plow it for days in the winter. And that's our alternate. And also, we see the traffic, we've heard that. How many of you have gone and actually sat in a line already, past growlers, waiting to get out on the highway? I have six times this year. There's no traffic control. The roads in and out, as it is with the HOA, and I'm telling you, somebody who worked for the city and the county, they need four roads in and out, straight across that subdivision, I would think. Now, let's also look at yards. We all like a green yard, right? You like a green yard? Sir, do you like a green yard? Do you use fertilizer? You know where I'm going with this, right? We already have boom problems in the lake. We're adding another health risk. No, thank you. And I want to see housing in Valley County. We can't keep Valley County stagnant, but we can't just turn stuff loose anymore.
Thank you Mike. Okay, there was one more, come on up.
Evening Commissioners, my name is Ron Davis, Donnelly Idaho. I'm a long Idaho resident. I found Valley County a long, long ago, and attended scout camp at Camp Tapawingo, which is now Camp Roberts. Eight years ago, I was lucky enough to buy property in Valley County, and I leave here full. Up until last month, I was the president of Crane Shores Homeowners Association. I was involved, I was the president there for three years, and on their board for five years. Taking a break now. But what I do remember, when I took a look at some of these proposals, I looked at it from a factual engineering standpoint. I'm a licensed engineer with the state of Idaho. Crane Shores is a 90-property subdivision on approximately 42 to 43 acres. There's six non-buildable properties, which leaves 84 homes on 42 to 43 acres. The proposed density for these new subdivisions, and they've been different names over the last year or two, but the proposed density is four times what we're looking at. Three to four times what we have in Crane Shores. Today Crane Shores, like I said, is an 84-lot subdivision. We have 37 completed homes. We're not even halfway built out. We have complaints and issues with snow removal and parking all year long. Not a year goes by where some kind of issue happens. You cannot park on the road. You're not supposed to park on the road anyway. But in the wintertime, when you have the berms of snow, it just makes it that much more difficult. The cul-de-sacs are private roads, and we have our own folks that come in and do that. We're just getting to full cul-de-sacs. I don't even think we have one cul-de-sac that's 100% full. We're running out of room to put snow. I just, from an engineering standpoint, and a technical standpoint, I wonder where we're going to put all the snow in a 40, or a 39, I think it was 39-acre proposed development with 300 people and who knows how many cars. Where's the snow going to go? Where are people going to park? That's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you Ron. Anyone else in the audience? Come on up.
Thank you Commissioners, my name's Cameron Pollak. I live in Crane Shores in Donnelly. I've been to a lot of these, I have never spoken, but it is important enough that if I can get through this, I just want to say, just please, no. This is not the right density for this area, even though that map's showing that. But those are all single-family homes, most of them stick-built, Crane Shores, Hawks Bay, Hill House, everything around there, not denying apartment buildings with so many people. Commissioner Mopin, you talked about crime, and your concerns about the crime and drug, and now if this goes through, you will have 600 to 1,200 transient people, they have no care, it's rentals. They don't care. They don't care, they have no pride of ownership. So, and there's just, you think of crimes and drugs and traffic and light pollution, you've heard it all. Just please say no. Wait for the next developer.
Thank you Cameron. Anyone else?
Greg Gibbene, Donnelly. Here we are again. This is probably, excuse me, this is the third time I've spoken in opposition to this project, along with a couple others for the prior project. It's obvious the scale of this project is way too large for this location. We've all stated why that is. The traffic, the infrastructure, this is a county that still whittles their snowpoles out of willow twigs. We don't have the funds to build the infrastructure that's going to be required for this many people, this many cars, this big of a development. I also have a question about if and when this lawsuit by the HOA goes through, if that happens, and we own the roads as the HOA, and they have to put the exits onto Roseberry, where do the exits for the driveways for the tent houses go? Do they have to go through the open space? Does that affect the open space that we're also happy about, that they're leaving open? Are they going to be routed through the apartment complex? Obviously, the scale of the project is the biggest question, the biggest problem. And that lawsuit, I think it's very important that we wait, find out what's going on with that. It's crucial to the design of this project, and it will affect our neighborhood immensely. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you Greg. Okay, last call. Anyone else? Ah, you changed your mind.
Okay, so, I'm Cindy Gibblew, I live at 13088 Hill House Loop. My property is right up against all that, but the reason I'm standing up now is because we're speaking of crime. And we have a lot of new development around our Loop and new people. And on August 28th, we had somebody come to my door, a kid that was all beat up, and told me there was a bunch of stuff going on, so I called the cops, and he took off, ran into my son's house at 2:30 in the morning, with his kids sleeping, and my son pulled the gun on him and almost killed him. So, these are new people in the area. Our area has grown so much, and that's one thing I don't want, is so many more people behind us. I have videos, because we have cameras all over around our place. So, that's all I wanted to say. It was really scary, the kid is lucky to be alive right now, and he's new to the area. He was running from a bad situation from his house, but the way he went about it, he almost got shot. So, that's all I have to say. We don't need no more of that.
All right, thank you Cindy.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Everybody's changing their mind. Art, come on up.
You can blame Dorina. Anyway, my name's Art Troutner. I live at 193 West Lake Fork Road, McCall Idaho. And I'm commenting on water quality, imagine that. And, you know, for the last three out of four years, the lake has gone toxic and been closed to human activity. We got lucky this year. But, the issue being, you know, if we keep adding development next to the lake, it's not going to help. It's just not going to help the health of the lake. And in order to mitigate that, mitigate the lake going bad, going toxic, I think the stormwater runoff issue is going to have to be approached from a very strong wording, as far as, you know, it has to be 100%. We can't let any more nutrients enter into the lake. It's, and every time we add more human activity, and with our present rules for stormwater runoff, it doesn't seem to be helping. So, some things, I think we need to revamp our stormwater runoff approach before we allow any more activity next to the lake. It's just, you know, that's one of our biggest assets in this entire county, is the health of that lake. When it goes south, nothing happens out there. Everybody's property is essentially put on hold, I mean, you can't go out in the lake. If that happens every year, values go down, people are unhappy, it gets more and more expensive to fix the problem. I think we, I just don't think that we can afford to keep adding development near the lake until we get that sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you Art. Okay, someone else in the back? Come on up. Come on up.
My name is Christiane Lukens. I live in 202 McCloud Lane in Donnelley. I want to bring up something which was brought up earlier about your average income for Valley County. I would have needed an apartment. My husband is on end-of-life care. He's on disability. He's on dialysis. And I'm the caregiver for him. So I cannot work full-time. I cannot leave him home alone. So what I had to do is get three part-time jobs, where I can go home in between to take care of him. I don't make a lot of money. I don't. It is enough to get me by. He's getting his little income. But how many people are out here in Valley County that have part-time jobs? A lot of them. And other jobs are seasonal. I had to come up with something to support myself because a full-time job at the hospital, I can do it. I can leave him home alone. So those are just things that I think they're not being considered for up here. We have a rough winter up here. A lot of people, if you work for a nursery, you don't have an income in the wintertime. You're staying home, or you find something else. So a lot of people will not be able to afford that and being pushed out eventually. That's just what I wanted to say. And I hope that the commissioners will deny this project.
Thank you, Lucy Onda. Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Okay, then we'll go ahead and, I guess, give you guys a chance to rebut some of these comments, and we'll go from there.
You now have to allow them to bring new information also?
They can rebut anything that was stated.
Hopefully, there won't be any more new information, but they are allowed to rebut the comments.
Well, we will stick to rebuttal.
Thank you, Keith. Maybe pull that a little closer so everybody can hear in the back.
Kind of here on the edge. Don't want to
You're on the edge?
risk damage to the brand-new equipment. So, okay, Commissioner. So we are going to focus on what was discussed today. Thank you, Dean. Cindy, could you go back to that GIS map that you had on the screen? And then maybe zoom back out a little bit. So what we're talking about here is not an area that is secluded on its own. In fact, this is an area that is teed up to move forward with development. You have one of the most robust sewer and water districts in the county that covers this area. You have this project that is on essentially what will ultimately be a transit line to the Tamarack development as it continues to go forward. So the question of why is this here and where should it be actually is a little more nuanced than just saying it should be on Highway 55 or it should be in city limits. What we're trying to do with this project is to find a location that is consistent. And Cindy, if you'd zoom in one more time. The, we know that the project right just to our north has a very similar density to what we're proposing here. The infrastructure is available. It does need to be addressed. You know, we're very aware of that. We know that the entity that we're buying from has left some things undone. And that's part of what we see as our job is to try to improve that situation for everyone. So in the development agreement, we included a condition of approval that says that we have to sit down with North Lakes and have an approved plan before we can even get to our first final plat for both sewer and water. So we see this as being in a situation right now that is not ideal, but that can be improved with the benefit of a public-private partnership, in essence. I think the roads are very similar to that question, to that point. With roads, you have a lot, there are several projects that need to be done in this area. We all know that. You have the S Bridge. When the S Bridge happens, there's going to need to be an alternative route through Norwood. That, we just, I mean, that's, what is it, physics, geometry? I'm not sure which one. But that's going to have to happen. And so what we've proposed in our development agreement again is to follow a growth paying for itself approach, which is to pay the fee that has been identified in the studies that the county has done. That fee ends up being about 1.3 million of cash available to the county to use for road mitigation. And we talked last time at the last hearing about whether that could go into a slush fund to help with the S Bridge replacement, or could that go to do the actual work of improving Norwood? So there is an alternative out there. The development agreement has specific language on all of that. The only thing that needs to be inserted is the amount of the fee, which we now have based on the study that you folks have commissioned. That would go hand-in-hand with the ITD study that ITD has called for, and we're happy to do that. We'll go do the study. And then, just like you, this Board of Commissioners has done for lots of other projects, we would come back before you say, okay, here's the study. Here's what we propose for a road mitigation agreement. Do you agree? And we have language for that in the development agreement as well. Utilities, I already talked about the well. When it comes to parking and snow, Cindy, could you switch back to that slide that you had? That one actually works just great. There is a ton of parking on this site. There is a ton of room for snow mitigation. This is not single-family residential where you're kind of checkerboarded throughout. We have a massive, we have massive areas to allow for snow storage. With regard to the health of the lake, the, you know, the truth of the matter is that residential development has less impact than agricultural uses. We all know that, too. This, in fact, will have less impact than a typical single-family residential development because we're not going to have a bunch of yards with people throwing whatever, who knows what, onto the yards in order to fertilize it. A lot of our area, as you can see, is the open space that we designed to buttress, to give a space against our neighbors. That's all going to be a natural open space area, and we'll be able to control the rest of it. And then in addition, we have the conditions of approval that are standard language that Valley County uses, that we have to go from our preliminary storm drainage and grading plan that we have with our preliminary plat to a detailed plan that has to be reviewed and approved by the county engineer. So we believe that the drainage and the health of the lake issues are also addressed. So then, I guess a couple of other thoughts. And I know Dean's going to want to say if you think so. I'll let him wrap it up. But I want to talk a little bit about affordability. We presented a slide last time. We did the research. We cannot find a single multifamily unit in Valley County that's available for rent. Not a single one. Right? Valley County needs a mix of residence, residential types. Mr. Gallipoli mentioned the health, safety, and welfare of the community. The health, safety, and welfare of the community also includes having a variety of housing types so that people have a place to stay. You know, this board is hearing the concerns of those who live right next to the project primarily. There's people from all over the place, but a lot of folks here are right next to the project. But you also represent those who need the type of alternative workforce housing that we're talking, we're trying to bring. So what do we do to make sure that it works? You have before you a very detailed development agreement. You know, a couple of the highlights, but I think the development agreement is really critical to all of this. So with regard to housing on the development agreement, it's very clear that it's 80% AMI. It's, we're not, we didn't do any calculations and then put them into the development agreement to try to tweak the numbers. The AMI calculations are going to be what they're going to be at the time. We understand that. The development agreement just says that it's based on 80% AMI. And so we're going to have to live with that. With regard to occupancy, there was a number of comments about that this would just be, you know, short-term renters or, you know, folks coming to ski or whatever. We have a provision in the DA that restricts it to Valley, occupancy to Valley County residents and those showing proof of employment. Because we're trying to address that issue and actually provide meaningful workforce housing, not something that's just going to be somebody's ski shack. With regard to lighting, although, we have a provision in the development agreement that says all lighting has to meet Valley County code. With regard to enforcement, how are we going to know that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing? We have provisions in the development agreement that say we're subject to audit. We have, and we also have a provision that says we have to come in from year to year and report on what we're doing and make sure that you got, you folks and whoever, Cindy and whoever's in Cindy's office. We never want to see Cindy leave, but like whoever's there in 10 years is going to have to be part of this as well. So, and then in addition, you know, we talked a little bit about emergency services. You know, this is the only time I've ever seen somebody offer up housing to try to address the issue for emergency services. You know, we can't find folks to help with emergency services because they can't afford housing. This project actually is willing to do something about it. So I think with that, maybe I'll let Dean say a couple. Do you have a few thoughts you want to share? And then maybe I'll wrap it up? Or do you want me to keep one? Okay, good. We've been thinking about it. Got it. So with that, then, I think I would just wrap it up by just saying, what we're trying to do here is provide a market-based solution to an existing problem. This, a lot of what I've heard tonight is essentially saying, well, because I don't think this is affordable, we shouldn't do it. We're letting the, you know, if that happens, then we're letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. What we're trying to do here is, without subsidies, get 80% AMI housing into the county. And we're doing it in a location that we think makes sense, where the, where North Lakes exists, that's, you know, hand-in-hand with the area development that's going to be going on with Tamarack. And we did it with a thoughtful layout that addresses and tries to create as much of a buffer against our neighbors as possible to try to keep things consistent. So, you know, we think that we've met all of the requirements for a PUD under 9-9, but we would love to hear any questions that the commissioners have about this as we move forward.
I've got only one question. Came, I've probably got a lot of questions, but one gentleman brought up those 10 houses, if they're not allowed to access the driveways on the Timberline, you guys have an alternative plan for that?
Yeah, Commissioner Thompson, yeah. That would be part of the rewrite. And that would mean a very inefficient situation where you have a road serving our neighbors on the east, and then we would have a new road serving our folks on the west right there. And so that's not good for anyone to, if you're a developer, you never want to have houses on one side of a road. And then you'd have houses on one side of a road for two rows. But we do, you know, we understand that. We designed it this way because, you know, we have reviewed the documents. You know, we will let the judicial process play out. And we see that as the quote-unquote worst-case scenario, but it still would work. And to Mr. Renfro's comment, there is front, there's adequate frontage to have a second access up there. That's not an issue.
One of my questions. There's a lot of misinformation floating around out there as far as rent price. So clarify for us again. This is based on AMI at the moment that rent is done. No one has preset a rent based upon 500 square feet at $1,500 or 2,000 square feet at, you know, $2,500 or whatever. There's a lot of misinformation on set rents. These have not been set. This is an AMI percentage only.
Correct.
80-something units of the other 200.
It's market rent.
Exactly.
It's free market rent. Okay.
No, we're not going to go down this road. We're not going to go down this road. We'll clear the room if we go down that road.
Clarifying information. Oh, it's my turn to talk. We gave you guys all a chance. My turn to ask questions. You've addressed my sewer and water infrastructure question because you are working with the existing owner of that well. That is part of your agreement to upgrade that. And my understanding and the reading of the North Lakes Sewer and Water letter is you have to work with them to bring all systems up to be able to support this number of units, if you can actually get that number of units at the end of the day. This is land use only. All of this, if you get land use, now you've got to go to every one of the agencies and actually get the proper permits to do this, including ITD. So you may never get these permits. If you can't come up and make it affordable, it may never get built. This is land use only. I think my others will be addressed during deliberations. That's all I have as far as questions for the applicant.
I guess it's my turn. Did you guys do soil studies and analysis? I'm concerned about the comments about the sandy ground and soil and all that kind of stuff. Has that been done? Or is that going to happen if you get?
We didn't do them. They were actually provided to us where the developer had previously done them, the owner of the property. And so those were then reviewed. And also, we also worked with a local contractor to get pricing on the job. And that local contractor is Granite Construction. We met with them several times at the site. And they're well aware of the site, the site material. And they reviewed all of that when they gave us pricing on the infrastructure improvements.
Is there any wetlands on this property?
No. There's, so when you, it's a little complicated right now because of the current ruling that the, that the Army Corps is currently dealing with, where they don't actually have, I'm dealing with this right now on another property right this second, where we have lands that are not considered wetlands based on the ruling of the Supreme Court. And the Army Corps actually doesn't have a mechanism to actually state or designate in a response to an applicant to say, these are not wetlands now. So basically, they're kind of hog-tied, if you will, until they get approval or some kind of direction as to how to deal with these things. That being said, it was something that was brought up in the, in the prior iteration or prior design of the site. So that's also why we increased the area green space, where you see the green portion of the marking near where it says Price Street. And then if you go to, Cindy, I'm sorry for doing this to you, but if you go to our other design you had up a couple seconds ago, you'll see that whole area in there is all green space now. So we did that just to be sensitive to the comments that had come out before, but it's not going to be wetlands from the standpoint of what Army Corps considers wetlands.
And I'm assuming probably a lot of it is irrigation-induced?
That's my understanding.
Commissioner Hasbrook, you can usually tell when you see straight lines on the wetlands that usually suggest irrigation-induced.
Part of the discussion today was the concern about leasing the ground. Are you guys, you guys lease the ground or do you own it?
Commissioner Hasbrook, the, ultimately, are you talking about the single-family?
I'm talking about the comment that Teresa had earlier about, is this leased ground or you guys own the ground?
I believe that what she, she's mixing different projects completely. So in other words, if we were building a manufactured housing community, then in a manufactured housing community, someone's buying the manufactured home, and then we're continuing to
Leasing the ground there.
Right, and we're leasing the space, if you will, is what's happening. These are single-family homes. This is totally different. They're attached to, they're attached and fixed to the ground.
We did clarify in the last meeting. We did request that those sales give first priority to people from Valley County.
Or even the multifamily, bigger buildings, they own the ground underneath that?
No, because those are rental apartments. So you're renting the apartment.
So it's just the houses on the
Just talking about the homes. Correct.
These will be stick-built and the whole lot will be sold.
On the homes?
The homes and the lot will be sold.
Two-story, are they stick-built, too?
These are, yes.
Everything is stick-built?
Yes, but they will retain ownership of
Of the land?
these common areas here.
I guess my final question is, you guys can see what the concern is. It's the Um, I guess my final question is you guys can see what the concern is. It's the density issue. Can you, is there any way you could do this with less density?
So, so you, you had asked us about that at the last hearing. And the, the reality is, is that it's already a, what would be considered a razor-thin project in the terms of going back to the, the 80% units. So, uh, I believe there was somebody who had mentioned about, uh, subsidies and talking about, in the end, we're all paying for it. But the reality is, is that's only the one building, that's the Lytec building, that would fall into a discussion over whether that's true or not. But the remaining 47 units, we're paying for it. We being the developer because we're subsidizing that. And the only way to subsidize that is with the market rate units in order to do it. It just, it doesn't pencil any other way. That's the truth. So.
Another thought to kind of trick when you were talking was about, these are all going to be leased units. These are going to be an HOA. Who is going to be managing this facility, the grounds, all that stuff?
Yeah, they'll be in a, a management, well, management and a, uh, there'll be a property manager who's on site.
Okay.
Um, so you'll have somebody that's there 24/7. Uh, another job that gets created besides the property manager is, is you're going to, you're also going to have engineering because you've got multiple buildings and you've got, uh, a lot of other machinery and equipment that's there. So there's going to be a chief engineer job as well. So there'll be two jobs that are there. And the reality is, is that in Valley County, that probably means two additional non-revenue units. I mean, that's like when you think about these things and the way that it actually works operationally, that's at, at a minimum, it's two more units that are non-rev because you have employees that are there.
Hey, I don't think I have any more questions. You guys have anything else you want to talk about?
Commissioner Hasbrook, could I just mention something in response to your question about density? Cinda, can you go to the depiction of the, it was a, no, actually back on the slide deck. It was the, we had some of the depictions or the renderings of what the project looks like. Maybe go, um, yeah, or maybe go, go down a little bit further if you could. Sorry. And almost there. This is the one I want. Sorry to make this hard on you.
Oh, it's not hard.
Uh, yeah, that one. So, um, when we talk about density and we talk about multi-family, I think what tends to happen is folks tend to picture something other than what this is. We have something that's got a ton of open space in it. When I deal with multi-family projects down in the Treasure Valley, it's 25, 30-plus units per acre. You know, that you're going to, well, that's really low actually, you know. But what we're talking about is three, four-story buildings kind of crammed on top of each other. And the conversations that I have with the neighbors are that you're going to be looking down from your fourth-story apartment into my backyard and all that sort of, because it's a much more dense product. So when we say this is highly dense, I think everything's relative. This is actually, in, in our view, an appropriate level of density because it gets to that critical mass of where you need to be in order to be able to provide some workforce housing product. But still, again, kind of maintaining those open spaces, we're not talking about anything higher than two stories. It's something that's trying to be, uh, consistent with what actually is already there in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
For that. Okay, if there's no more comments or no more questions up here, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It dug into be, what is it, 5:34? And I want everybody in the audience to realize that we're having a meeting in the evening so everybody can get here. That's been a big issue over the years is having them during the day. We're here in the evening now. It's been a long day for all of us. Need a short break? Okay, we'll take five minutes and, um, no ex parte contact, please. Just give us our face here and.
Did you close the public hearing?
I did, at 11, or 5:34. Back, if you can, we can have some quiet, please. The public hearing is closed. At this time, I will ask my fellow commissioners if they're ready to render a verdict or if you want to table this for, for the thoughts. What is your pleasure?
I'm good.
You're good? Cherry?
Ready to go.
Okay, sounds like we're ready to go. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for PUD 23-1 or C, and CUP 23-10.
Do you want any discussion first or?
It's totally up. You can have discussion if you want, or if you're ready to make the motion and.
I would like to address some of the issues in the crowd.
I got quite a few things I'd like to bring up, just. Go ahead and start. First off, you hear a lot of things about roads. We already know roads. And, um, for me, we've already got a plan put in place to do all Roseberry Road from one end to the other. In my mind, because we have two communities out here. We have this community that we're looking at right now. It's already there in place. We've got Tamarack. That's another community that's out there. We have responsibility because of all the traffic that's coming through and we've heard all the traffic stuff. I know it because I work up in Tamarack. I go through there a lot. So the road situation, we know it's coming at us. S Bridge is coming at us. We've already got a plan to get our S Bridge gone and straighten out that stretch. Even that one bad corner, it's down there next to Hawks Bay. I've heard a little bit of talk about straightening that out. So that's, uh, just talking about the roads, these gentlemen are bringing, uh, money to the plate here of 1.3 million that'll help on that road. Not concerned about Norwood. When we have to deal with the S Bridge, then the county will deal with Norwood. As an alternate until we can get that bridge spanned and done. So that piece, I, I, I'm not concerned with. The infrastructure, the sewer and water, um, they're going to be working to help create a better system with North Lake to service all their stuff. That's something that they're bringing to the table. We've got to, we've got to bring that up. Um, for me, um, it is a place for people to live. Springs are full. Uh, one in Donley, it's full. People need a place to live, period. Period. And I would be doing them in justice is not to allow more housing to show up. As far as what this gentleman just said about, uh, the height of the buildings, the ones across the road on townhouses, they're two-story. These homes will be two-story. You can call it workforce housing. You can call it whatever you want. We need places for people to live. Clustering of development, heard that from Cinda when I was on P and Z. She ingrained that into my brain a lot. I appreciate that because that's, uh, that's how we keep our open spaces open in Valley County. And it goes along with our, um, comprehensive plan. That's what we want. It is compatible with the surrounding development. And yes, I know Timberline LLC has been a problem. We've heard that down the road. I've heard it from Chris and even the guy who's, can't remember the guy's name that worked with you, the engineer. He, uh, he's not impressed with him at all. So as far as the rest of it, um, I think it's important that we not stop development. Stopping development to me, to wait until we get an S Bridge, to wait until we have this or to wait till we have that. That's not what you do. You have to look into the future, what we need for down the road. And I truly believe that. I'm not going to stop development. I'm looking out 20, 30 years. What's going to happen? I want that road from Donley to West Mountain to look like a highway because you're going to have a lot of people on it. And you're not going to stop that development. You're not going to stop people wanting to do subdivisions out in those areas. Not going to happen. You're not going to stop Tamarack from expanding and getting larger. It's just not going to happen. So we, as a county, we have to improve that road situation and make it safe with constituents in our valley. Whatever happens at the corner of Donley and Highway, yes, you do need to stop light. I hate the ones in McCall, but you guys need one really bad. And I don't know what their, their answer that is to that, but, uh, we need something there because that is, that's getting to be a mess. And this valley is going to keep growing and we can't stop the growth. It's coming at us like a freight train. And that's, go ahead, Cherry.
First of all, I would like to encourage you to increase insulation values should this be approved. That is something when people are talking about the cost of affordable housing, if they have a high, um, heating bill, then that also adds to the cost monthly. So that is important. Um, David, you're bringing up the McCall housing strategy. I sat on that. The one thing that came out of it that we can actually do in Valley County and Idaho is density bonuses. So you keep bringing that up, but I sat on it. I lived it. It was part of the entire conversation. So that is not something that, you know, I mean, that is the one thing that we can actually do that came out of that. Uh, my turn to talk. Safety, health and stability. We talk about the health and safety of those that are living there. So Joey, I do represent, I live in McCall. Listen to me. This is my turn to talk. Once you were elected, you represent all of the constituents from Valley County. So when I go to the grocery store, when I go out for dinner, people are begging me, please do something about housing. It's the first thing that we.
Hey, hey.
Our turn to talk.
Please, please.
Our determination or our time to talk about it. So they may not be in the room fighting, they don't live next door to it. That always makes a difference. But I get a lot of conversations. We get a lot of conversations. Please do something about housing in Valley County. One of the health and safety concerns, and I spoke to it last time. So we did a fair housing proclamation today. One of the things that it actually states in it is that housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability. Housing, if you don't have housing for people that live in your community, first of all, we have a 0.7% unemployment rate right now. There is no place to house people because everyone is fully employed and over-employed. People need housing units to be able to live here. It is a critical component of health and stability for a region. We have to have housing. We actually had a presentation earlier today from a vendor that was hired to look at our critical infrastructure. And they actually have the current rental listings in Valley County. A 900-square-foot house in Donley, $2,000. 850 square feet in Donley, $1,475. A townhome in Donley, $2,300. I mean, rents are high right now. It is a percentage of AMI that is an accepted practice. I did mortgages for years also. So we target a certain percentage of AMI. That is not always what factually happens in the rental world because people do work multiple jobs. And if a family unit based on free market rent is based upon both of the income structures within that unit. The ITD study for the intersection in Donley is going to be required not only of this developer. Tamarack has to participate. Other developers have to participate. That is an ongoing request right now. ITD is already studying what it will happen in Donley. There will be a quarter study that starts in the spring. They will be studying it all the way from the county lines. So that's a large part of the conversation is what to do with that. Dark Sky was already addressed. I did development sightings for large companies when I lived in the valley. First stand is always rooftops. You'll never have a grocery store in Valley, Aaron, Donley until there is enough housing units there to support that. That's just the way that commercial development works. Once commercial development, uh, looks at the number of people living in that area, they will join your community. They will not do it until that time. We are a resort county. Everyone understands what that means. I live in McCall. I deal with, in the summertime, a lot of traffic concerns. We brought up crane shores and the density there. I don't know what the average housing price is in crane shores right now. But we cannot continue to build only that type of housing product. We will never, ever be able to keep a middle market here. Our middle homeowners are leaving in droves. We have a lot of young families that are leaving. They don't see any future for them here. We have to be able to create a middle income, uh, situation in order to create community. You don't have community without, without that middle market being present and they are leaving in droves.
Edit?
So I, I don't know if you want me to repeat. We are to address why we are overriding the planning and zoning split vote. And it was only two and two vote. Keep calling Scott Freeman. He wasn't present. If you're not present, if you are not, no, that's not true, David. So it is a recommenda, uh, 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 it's our turn. When planning and zoning makes a decision on PUDs, totally different from CUPs, when they make a recommendation, it is a recommendation only. And so we are addressing the difference in what we see versus what the Planning and Zoning Commission sees. First of all, I think there's a fair housing issue that was addressed and we do need to be sensitive to fair housing. That is something that provides equity for all individuals. That is one of the reasons that I'm looking at this. Our comp plan outlines, and I addressed it in the last meeting, so Cinda, do you need me to reiterate it in this meeting? Uh, for all of the reasons on the comp plan that I see, just for the record?
If I didn't capture it, um, we'll make sure it's all captured by the time we bring that, your facts and conclusions back.
Okay. So population, accommodate growth and development. Evaluate impacts of costs on existing homeowners to ensure no hardship occurs. That's why it's so critical that you guys do the. That's why it's so critical that you guys do the infrastructure improvements at no cost to the existing homeownerships. Private property rights. You, you look at all property rights, protect private rights while considering community rights. Design all provisions of the comp plan to protect private property rights and community rights to a healthy and safe economy. Or community lack of housing is a safety and healthy concern. I know code sixty-seven, sixty, sixty-five oh eight, ensure land use policies, restrictions, conditions and fees do not violate private property rights. Diversely impact property values or create unnecessary technical limitations on the use of property. Design land use regulations to protect health, safety and welfare to the community without unnecessary conditions, delays and costs. Protect all persons from being deprived of property rights without due process of law. Chapter four, natural resources, preserve and protect rich natural resources, assets, property values, animals from threats of fire. Promote planned unit developments through the use of the wooie. Use non-farm ground to develop and protect ag lands if possible, this is non-farm ground. Hazardous areas, protect health and safety from natural hazards, no, we don't build in the flood zones. Uh, transportation, encourage participation in RDAs for capital improvements. Use design techniques for new development along fifty-five and major collectors to reduce, reduce turning movements and preserve safety and future capacity. Housing, encourage adequate supply of affordable and quality housing types for local residents, including current and future, working and retired. Encourage affordable housing to be located in a wide range of locations. Encourage economic, ethnic and social diversity in neighborhoods. Integrate community housing onsite and new developments. Encourage clustering of buildings to reserve open space. Reason, uh, goal four, encourage new development in our near-existing communities in Valley County. The objective of that is to encourage industrial and commercial services to locate within cities and within their impact areas. Says provide a variety of housing types, encourage affordable housing. Mend land use ordinance to increase densities in areas supported by sewer and where it is compatible with surrounded, surrounding land uses. Drive to gate, construction costs low. Retain the rural atmosphere, the objectives of that, protect and preserve the best ag grounds. Encourage development and compact subdivisions to better facilitate use of utilities, road maintenance, police and fire protection. And Donley is a fire district, not a fire station just for Donley. That was brought up and a concern. I looked through all of our ordinances and this development has followed all of the PUD ordinances. I will be in favor of this.
May I clarify anything on that? It follows all of the P, PUD ordinances except for, uh, the density where they're asking for the variance to allow for the AMIs.
Correct.
You're done?
Finally.
Those, I think you both brought up some really great points. It, the base issue that we all feel, and, and I feel it all the time, is the fact that we just don't want to see more people up here. We don't want to see any more growth. And we can't stop that. It's impossible. The only way to stop it is to go by the ground. And I think it's important that a guy be able to do what he wants to with his ground up to a certain point. That's a, that's one of our founding principles. These guys have come in and done everything we've asked them to do for a PUD. Um, I think it's a much nicer-looking development than the meadows next door because we didn't get any open space with the meadows. And I think this is gonna create open space for kids to play in and, and run around in and that kind of stuff. The thing that, that is hard for me to get over is the fact that the, the density issue is, still bothers me. I feel like the density is still too high. And that's why I asked the question to Dean and Heath about, can you do this with less density? And it's just not economically feasible. So that kind of is the situation we're in. Now, maybe when construction gets cheaper, maybe we can go lower, lower density. But unfortunately, we're in a situation now where the only place that we can develop is in the Donley area because of the sewer. And that's it. The rest of us are kind of stuck. So that's where the development's been happening for a lot of years. Um, I'm, like with Sherry, I agreed, we have a huge shortage of what I call base housing for young families. You, 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 there's so many restaurants up here that close half the week because they can't find help. Same thing with the grocery stores, same thing with a lot of shops that there's nobody around to take these jobs. We're, we're slammed with it really hard at the county. I think we have seven or nine vacancies. We can't find people to apply because they can't find a place to live. This is a, a serious issue. So, and I think, uh, that's something as a commissioner, you gotta look out twenty, thirty years. And I'm hoping down the road that maybe some of these rents will get cheaper. As, as more are built, they should, where more folks could afford to, to live here. But, um, I, I'm satisfied with the application and the work that you both have done, and I appreciate the honesty and upfrontness. And, uh, I think that's about all I got to say. But this time, I would entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the EUD twenty-three dash zero-one Garnet Valley and CUP twenty-three ten preliminary flat.
Could I add to your motion that we continue to create the development agreements and off-site, um, improvement agreements?
Absolutely.
That would be subject to.
Subject to.
Approval of the facts and conclusions and development agreement.
Yes.
Yep.
Subject to facts and conclusions.
And development.
And the development agreement.
Was that, is that, yeah, let's repeat the motion.
Yeah, you go ahead, because I didn't pick up on what you said.
Did you give us anything? I can't remember if we had a. No, I, I didn't write one. It's, it's a motion to approve the PUD and the CUP subject to final approval of the facts and conclusions and development agreement.
That's correct.
I'll make that motion, yeah.
Yep.
Second. Evan, a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all for coming. Best part of democracy.
I'll just come get my stuff in the morning.
Got it before six, does that mean like I went to dinner?
No. Did you want to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Chair?
Oh, yeah. So at this time, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting and I'll see everybody next week.